Today is April 30th. I call the meeting of the Arlington School Committee to order. First item on the agenda will be public participation. Do we have a sign-in sheet over there?
We do.
We do.
We don't have a secretary.
We don't have a secretary today.
Oh.
You will be playing the role of secretary.
Oh, you're the secretary.
Okay. First, I want to introduce Clara Stewart, who is a new student rep. She's a freshman. She went with us to Day on the Hill yesterday, so she's really gotten initiated. And Shabon Foley, who just appeared for a minute, is our AEA rep with us today. Kirsty Allison-Ampy is homesick, so she'll, she's trying to get over the bug that's going around. Mariah Terrell from Thompson, first person up. As I call people up, I remind that the public participation is a three-minute opportunity, and we traditionally do not comment on things that come before us in public participation. We will take them under advisement, and they may end up at an action item later in another meeting. So, Mariah, welcome.
Great, thank you. Just good evening, Dr. Bodie and members of the school committee. My name is Mariah Terrell. I currently have two students at Thompson, a second grader and a fourth grader. I have an incoming kindergartner and a two-year-old, so I'll have two other kids who are, who are coming into Thompson in the next couple of years. I just wanted to follow up. I emailed everybody a letter this past week, and I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to read that. And for those of you that responded to me so quickly, I really appreciated that. And I appreciated the thoughtful replies and some of the conversations I was able to have with you. I'm here with a few other Thompson parents tonight, just to reiterate our concern about equality among schools in regards to class sizes. Specifically, we're interested in seeing the class sizes in the older grades at Thompson be brought down in line with the other schools. Currently, we have the highest number of students in our fourth and fifth grades by three or four kids per class. I understand that you are well aware of the issues regarding the budget and physical limitations of the Thompson School, and we trust that you can come up with some other ways to make this happen and to support our teachers and students. I have already met with Karen Donato about this, and as you know, she's also concerned, and we're working with her on this issue as well. I'm eager to hear your thoughts and potential, potential solutions and offer to assist if you find that brainstorming with parents is helpful. Thank you again for your time and the effort you put into the excellence of our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next will be Jane Morgan.
Hi, my name is Jane Morgan. I am a Stratton parent of a current second grader, two kindergartners, and I have a two-year-old at home, so got a long time to be there, and we've been really happy there. I know that you have heard from many of us over the last weeks about our concerns about the placement specifically for our current second graders during the relocation time when they can't be at Stratton. And we understand we're on the agenda for tonight. We're glad that that's being addressed. We're eager to begin some kind of dialogue with you so that we can find a, and fund placement for our kids that is at an elementary school during that year. So I'm not going to go into the details. We've gotten really great response from so many of you. I recognize that a lot of you are writing back to us late at night, early in the morning, at the weekend, and we really appreciate that. We feel like, you know, we've gotten some, some great response, and we've started working on this issue even before it's become an agenda item at school committee, so we're really grateful for that. I just want to share one personal anecdote with you. I'm mindful of my time and yours, but I had a conversation with Principal Hannah after we knew that the kids were going to be relocated, but before we knew what their placement was. And he said, "Jane, you know, you've got all these kids, like, how is this going to be?" And I was like, "Oh, it's going to be fine. Like, we are the kind of family, we're going to get it done. I know they're going to be at different schools. It's all going to be okay. You know, kids are resilient. It's going to be fine. My kids are going to get to be at an elementary school with other kids their own age. Maybe they'll play soccer with them. They're going to be at school with them eventually. Maybe they'll do some kind of a project. Isn't that going to be great? They're going to know all these other kids, and we can be a part of that school for the year, and then we're going to come back to Stratton where we're so happy." And I still feel that way about the experience my sons are going to have. I feel like that is how my kindergartners, who will be second graders, who at this point will be at Hardy, are going to have that experience, and it's going to be great. I don't feel like that is what is being offered presently to my second grade daughter, and that concerns me. And so we're really looking forward to working with all of you. We thank you for your attention to this so far, and we're looking forward to beginning the process of figuring this out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Frank Ciano.
Good evening, honorable members. I came, my name is Frank Ciano, and thank you for being here and doing what you do. I've come because I'm a town meeting member from '15, and the parents have written me numerous emails about this Stratton relocation. And I see the face of our superintendent, and it's so good to see you be so concerned. They're unhappy with the idea of putting their fourth graders at the Artisan. Now, I knew the Artisan when it was the West. I went to the East. I graduated from this high school in '66 with, guess who? Norcross Stratton III. So he was, I believe, the grandson of what the school is named. So the only thing I ask you is to please keep in mind, listen to what they're saying. They want to be at an elementary school, please God. And, and if you need more money to do it, then, then ask for it. Because I think the town meeting last night was disposed to listen to the parents. So I'm here for you. I ask that you listen to them, and please make them be happy. Now granted, not everybody is happy about every decision that's made, but keep in mind their concerns, please. You know, they don't have PhDs, many of the parents. Maybe I speak out of turn, and maybe they all do, but, but they're parents, and they're mothers of children, and they're worried. So Arlington has been famous for years for taking care of the parents and the children, and I hope that you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. At that point, this is the extent of our list. Is there anyone else for public participation? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal '16 budget charts with Ms. Johnson.
Let me have that under the list. As part of the Budget Subcommittee, we've been trying to look at different ways of exploring the budget growth over years. You know, this is always a difficult question, you know, our, is it fair? Is it equitable? Are we doing what we ought? Should we be doing more? Should we be doing less? So I've been doing a little work. We did some work around the Town Manager 12, some of which you saw at Town Meeting last night, and Superintendent Bodie will be talking about later tonight. But we did do a couple of graphs that we felt weren't quite ready for Town Meeting, but that the Budget Subcommittee felt would be important to share with all of you. Now, what you have here is actual budgets in green for the school department. This is all in, grants revolving the whole nine, the whole nine yards. The orange bars here represent what it would be if we took this '07 budget and just multiplied it by three and a half percent each year. So as you see, it's a perfectly straight extension. And you can see that in comparison to that, the rate of growth for the school department budget has exceeded that, that line, particularly since FY12, when we first started receiving seven percent on our special ed portion of our town appropriation. And I know this is a matter of concern and discussion, and so we wanted to start thinking about some ways to look at it. So this is just the budgets, and you can see we are growing much faster than three and a half, particularly in the last couple of years. However, if you take those budgets and divide it by the number of students, we see a very different picture. Once again, I'm taking the '07 budget and multiplying it by three and a half percent and dividing it by the students. No, I'm actually just multiplying it by three and a half percent. I redact that. The green bars, I'm taking the actual budget and dividing it by the number of students in place at that time. So what you're seeing is despite the fact that our budget in, you know, '12, '13, '14, in the last slide, is exceeding the three and a half percent growth rate, which is generally considered the standard in the town of Arlington, when you divide it by the number of students we have on board, it's actually falling off that metric. Now, what does this mean? I don't know. But, you know, and, and this is, this is one of those things that, you know, I think, I think the discussion about the three and a half maybe turning into three, the seven percent, and the 25 percent of per pupil for new student growth is something we need to look at. I think we need to look at it. You know, that, that maybe 25 percent per pupil is just not enough to keep pace, because as you see, we're just not keeping pace when you consider the number of students we have. So, do you have any questions?
Dr. Seuss.
Just a simple question. This number is lower than the per pupil spending. Is that because we're not including healthcare costs?
There, there are two different metrics. This is not, is not per pupil spending. Per pupil spending is a calculation by the state that includes many factors and attempts to capture expenses on both the town and the school side. This is not that. This is our school department budget divided by the number of students. So I want to be sure to draw that distinction, because there'll be a lot of confusion if we try to mix those two things.
Ms. Starks.
So these do not have the seven percent for special ed or the 25 percent to add it on, just the three and a half?
No, no, they, no, they, the orange bars do not.
Okay.
The green bars do include that.
Okay, so it does, so it has the three and a half, the seven, and the 25 percent. Oh, okay. Just, the title was just throwing me.
It's quite, it's more visible in this slide, because you can see that, you know, we're really pacing up much faster than three and a half percent in, you know, from '12 onward. You can see that the green bars are exceeding the orange bars. But at the same, whoops, wrong way. But at the same time, our enrollment growth has been so rapid that when you divide that growth by the number of students, we're actually rather shrinking in terms of budget per student.
Mr. Thielman.
So my question is, you know, the Town Manager has a three and a half percent increase in the budget for this next fiscal year, FY16 for the schools, and then his proposal is that it go down to three percent, or three?
Three and a half, three and a quarter, and then three.
Three. So, I mean, do we have a strategy to, is this part of the strategy to respond to this?
I think it's something we really need to be thinking about. You know, do we, do we want to maintain the status quo? You know, it was a deviation from the long-range plan to give us the per pupil, to help us compensate with the enrollment growth, and it was very generous and it was very helpful. But now the three and a half, which was considered static, is being called into question. And there's some members who are calling in very strongly into question the seven percent on the special ed allocation. So if we're going to relook at it, I think we want to relook at it from a lot of different angles, and this is one way to be thinking about it.
So my, my, you know, my concern, or my, or my, what I'm raising is, is that the timeline for the FY17 budget really starts?
Now.
This, now, it really starts now.
Yes.
And the conversation starts now, and, you know, it accelerates in the fall, and really by, by October, November, the number's kind of fixed, and it's not going to move after the fall.
That's true.
So, are, so I guess, I don't know, I guess the question is, are we going to do anything or not?
Well, I think we are, just having us look at it from different angles, and, and the issue is, is really the enrollment growth number the right factor? And I think that we have, and we have, we've expressed it publicly as a group, our commitment to the long-range plan, the stability of budgets, and I, and I think that Arlington sort of stands, sort of in a unique place of having this kind of approach to budgeting, which we don't, we're not trying to say, we're not trying to undermine. I just want to emphasize that. What we're trying to do is to take a look at, well, what, what are really the needs here, and are there other ways that we should address it? Now, enrollment is the, it seems to be the real variable, and perhaps what we need to be looking at is the enrollment growth factor. And, and that's, I think, what is part of the discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Heiner.
One of the things that we, does this include grants and everything else?
Yes.
Okay. As I've mentioned several times, we have become dependent on grants. A one-time grant for a one-time thing, I think, is great. We should continue to go for those. Those grants, like the kindergarten grant that we've become dependent on, it, as they go, and as the town is decreasing our amount of money, it's a factor. So in our thinking and our planning, and I'd asked the board to ask the superintendent to find out all the grants that we are dependent on, and we had, part of our plan, long-range plan, has to start us thinking about weaning away from those and getting it. It adds another money factor. But these grants and AEF and all these other wonderful people that have done great things for us, as long as we're dependent on those, they may dry up, they may go away, and we're going to be caught in a double shot fall with the town and everything. The other thing I want to mention is that in the past, we have had, when, we got the kindergarten money and everything, and originally I understood the agreement to do that, but the town has been making X amount of dollars on us in each year, and every time I bring it up, I've been told, "We have an agreement with the town." The town right now is looking at a fiscal crisis in the next four to five years, and part of their plan is expressed in the past two meetings, the Town Meeting, is everybody in the town pulling back. I don't want to pull back. We need to continue with our programs that exist, and we need to expand some of these programs. But at the same time, we have this partnership. So where I'm coming with this is, the message that we send, we have to sell this super hard. We did a wonderful job, thanks to Cindy and everyone else pushing for that extra 25 percent, dealing with our growth. We got to really be together and have one speech going forward. And I'm saying this because I think sometimes we get a little fractured. We come, we, we get excited, we talk to parents and everything, and then sometimes we have to pull back on it. So I'd ask my fellow members, working together, we have one speech go forward, strong, the way we did with the 20, to get that for our added growth. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, I think that we need to go in with what we need and fight for it. You know, what is, what is the amount of money that would be adequate for us to fund the schools for the next five years? Not a wish list, because that could, that could totally throw everything off, 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 off budget, but what do we need and we should fight for it? So, in other words, the 25 percent that we got for the enrollment growth factor was perhaps not what we should have been fighting for. I mean, any deal is better than, than what we were at, but it was still probably too low for the numbers that we were looking at. So, and the long-range plan is setting, setting us up for an override at some point. You know, I don't think that we can, as a school department, look at an override in 2022 or 2023. I think it has to be done before that. That's already more than 10 years since the last override. So I, I think it would be great to have a presentation before the fall, you know, before the end of the school year, showing us what you project as our real needs over the next five years, given the contract coming to a close. We're going to finalize that with the teachers and the other, the other union subsets, but, and then go in and fight for that number. Make a case.
The really tricky part in all of this is the enrollment variable. And we have my projections, but we are, as part of our space analysis, we're going to have an outside consultant doing a different type of enrollment projection analysis. And I think in order for that to be really powerful, I think we need that data. Because, you know, I've done the long-range projection based on, you know, potential settlements for the contracts and what I think the enrollment could be based on what it's been in the past. But this person is looking at it from a more comprehensive way, and I think once we get a better picture of what they're projecting for enrollment growth, then we're in a position to say, "Look, you know, I'm projecting this, he's projecting this, and if it's closer to that, here's what we're going to need." You know, that's, if we were a slow-growing or flat district, projecting your needs is a whole different ballgame. But, you know, if we have 100 new kids next year or 400 new kids next year, that, it's enormously different in terms of what we need, and it's really hard to guess.
Mm-hmm.
It's been the problem all along. And the year's delay of the enrollment growth factor, while practical for all kinds of reasons, poses issues if we have a big surge in the summer, because we basically have to pretty much suck it up in the first year, and then we're paid in the out years.
Right.
Ms. Starks.
I think also the interesting thing is, I got in touch with the Town Manager's office and the Selectmen's office, and I requested the census data, because the town does a census. It's not official, it's not like, you know, the, the, the US Census. And I said, you know, "I know you guys get census numbers, because if you don't respond to the census, they can not allow you to vote." And I said, "So, do you have those numbers? Can I have those numbers?" And the person that I was, you know, going back and forth with said, "Well, I'm not really sure how useful they are, because mostly they're numbers of voters. They're not necessarily like the whole town voters." And I said, "Okay, well, just tell me this. We're seeing this huge influx of kids in the public schools. Is there a big influx of people in town?" And their response was, "No, we're pretty flat." So it's not that our town is growing, it's that our town is changing. And I think that that's the problem, is that we don't, this, the change in, in students is not just because there's a population explosion in town, there's a population change in town. And that, I think, is why it's so hard to figure out what it is. If it was an explosion in people, everybody would be seeing it, and, and everyone, and so I think that's part of the problem, is that, not that they don't believe us, but they're just like, "Well, where are they coming from?" And I'm like, "I don't know, but here they come," you know? And so it was just interesting that they could not, in any way, shape, or form, verify, you know, say that they were seeing any kind of increase in numbers. They're like, "No, actually, we've been pretty consistently right around the same number, you know? We're not really seeing a huge growth in town." And I thought, "Wow, that's really interesting to me," because I was trying, I was doing some of this as well, trying to think about, like, cost per stu, is that, you know, does it need to be related to, you know, population? But it's not. It doesn't, you know, the population itself hasn't grown. So I thought that was eye-opening.
Let me pass your question on to either Ms. Johnson or the superintendent, in that we do get the census and the children who are recorded in the census. And so if you could comment just briefly on what you're seeing through the census.
Well, one of the things is actually in?
The birth data.
There is a, and by the way, for people who are listening, this is a report that we give to Town Meeting every year, and it keeps, every year we keep expanding it, and, but there is a section in here on enrollment, and I think there's some charts that you'd find very interesting. One of them, and sometimes it's the way they're interrelated, if you look at the current kindergarten, the, that cohort, when that cohort was born, that first year, there were about, I think, 510 students, or children born then. Our, our entering kindergarten class last year was, I think, 504 when we started, I think up to 513, 516 right now. But that's almost a one-to-one. That's 100% of your cohort that was born that are in our kindergarten. Now, they're obviously not the same students, it's just the numbers. The cohort for next year is 560. Right now, we're pretty much as we were last year. I was going to give you a little update on kindergarten numbers, they keep changing. In fact, we have Ms. D'Agostino here tonight, who is our registrar. We are at, I think, 454 as of today. That's about where we were last year, and by the end of the summer, we were at 504. So we've been seeing a retention rate from birth numbers at any, in the last couple of years, around 90%.
It started out, when I first started doing the, that, it was about 87, and it's been creeping up steadily, but this past year, it was, it was 100%.
So even if we had 90%, which was been the last couple of years, we're, we're over 500 again. So that's what I'm expecting to see in our kindergarten numbers this year. So that, that gives you a little bit of an idea of where we are. And then it stays pretty high after that, too. In fact, it gets up to the 600s.
Mr. Heiner.
The, the amount of students, just to go along with what Ms. Starks said, I live in Kelwin Manor. When I first moved here 20 years ago, majority of the people were my age. As each one of my generations move out, another family moves in, but they have two to three kids. I saw five kids, I saw five kids and two houses move in, so. So the, the population is growing, but it's the mini part of the population that affects us. The other part that, that scares the living daylights out of me, and it's nowhere near done, but the potential, the project that may go into the Mugaw property is talking about 280-plus houses. If you do a one-to-four, that's between 40 and 50 kids just hitting Hardy School. I don't know where we're going to put them, on the roof or something like that, but, I mean, we, I, I don't mean to be sarcastic, but that is dramatic. So there was never an intent, when they closed the elementary schools, Arlington became unaffordable. My wife and I grew up in this town, we could not afford to live here. We left for 24 years. We came back. We didn't bring kids, that's the only thing, we didn't bring our kids with us. But other, the next generation, your generation are not having children in their early twenties. They're able to afford this town, so they come into the town affording it, and that, if we knew what we knew now, then, we would probably not have closed four or five of the elementary schools that are now condos and apartment houses and stuff like that. We didn't, we didn't, we haven't done it, and we don't have any place to grow except vertical. So it supports it. We cannot afford, I don't mean to be a snob, 20 years ago, I never thought I'd be saying something like that, we cannot afford any more residential, additional residential. We're already growing with the existing residential that we have. Thank you.
Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, just a couple of points. One is, I was really interested in census data, too, and I looked at the official numbers. One really interesting fact is that 60% of people living in Arlington today were not here in the year 2000. So just showing how, how much of a change, turnover there's been. And I think what's interesting also is that it's not shared equally among all the neighborhoods. And so sometimes you get people who are very well entrenched in the financial affairs of the, the town, may not live in the neighborhoods where they see a lot of toddlers, whereas in my street, you know, you can't walk two feet without tripping over a toddler, basically, you know, it's very, so it's not completely shared in all the neighborhoods. A couple other points. Oh, one of the things I think is really important for parents to know is that we're not just getting enrollment surges in the, the kindergarten, we're getting them coming in at all levels. And I think that was actually one of the problems at Thompson, that August 1st, the fifth grade numbers this year didn't look that awful, but by September 1st, they did. And that, that we are getting people come in, you know, at all the levels. So sometimes people feel like, "Oh, why aren't all the resources being put into the kindergarten?" And that's because we actually have needs, overcrowding needs at, at every level in the district. One final point that I want to say that I keep saying to lots of people, this town has more room to grow in terms of expanding students, because even if we never built another property, there's a tremendous amount of properties, especially in East Arlington, where there's older people who, at some point, will decide they don't want to mow the lawn and shovel the sidewalks, and might want to live in a, you know, an easier place. That's going to turn over, and there's going to be new families. So I know a lot of people are really angry about development. I don't think that's, if we stopped all development, I don't think we'd solve this problem.
Okay, let's, let's wrap up on this agenda item. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, for the parents who are with us, particularly for the parents who are concerned about the class size issues, yeah, we hear you and we understand this, and you can see by the charts that we have fiscal constraints on us, and the appropriating authority is Town Meeting, and there's a whole political context in terms of the way we govern our town, and we certainly appreciate having you here. We feel like you're the wind in our sails, and we would appreciate you being further involved in the civic affairs of the town. The other thing I want to say is that it was our intent for this agenda item to be a preview of our Town Meeting presentation, but the moderator asked us to go early last night because the, the capital budget was being advanced to accommodate Mr. Foskett's schedule. That's why we went on Wednesday, rather than having a discussion of what we were going to say and, and doing it next Monday. So for those who are So for those who are town meeting members who want to get up and mention a couple of the statistics that we're having and talk about the challenges, when we get into the operating budget, that may not necessarily be a bad thing. And with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the elementary buffer zone report. Ms. D'Agostino, please come forward.
Some of the parents here this evening may have even met Ms. D'Agostino when they registered, if not this year, even last year.
Or maybe you recognize, good morning, this is Leilani.
Yes. We know your voice.
Tonight, I am here to notify you about buffer zone analysis. For the next 15 minutes, please plan your day accordingly. So, good evening Superintendent Bodie and Chairman. So, you know, I went up, before I even begin my presentation, because there are some people that just know how much I love to talk to school committee. I said 15 minutes, like solid 15 minutes. So I'm going to just say, packing it all in in 15 minutes, there's a good chance I've forgotten something. So if there's something that you have requested that I have not covered in my meek little 15 minutes, please just let me know, and I certainly will get you any answers, any data that you are seeking. So I preface by saying, moving faster than me on school committee is difficult. I have the honor and the privilege of welcoming all the new people into the town. And I've done this now for a couple of years, so it really is kind of an exciting thing. And this is not the first time that we're presenting, so I don't have to go all through every little thing. I think you all know what a buffer zone is. There's a picture, just to refresh your memory. But one thing I did want to note is, we have made so many really important and good changes to the registration process. One of the biggest changes or concerns or, not complaints, but concerns that are voiced a lot is, how do I know that I'm going to land in a buffer zone? And, you know, they'd come and say, I didn't even realize there was such a thing as a buffer zone. So we have really worked on addressing that. If you are on the Arlington Public Schools website and you go to school registration, or you go to school locator, you can find out this information quick. And a lot of parents were calling saying, I'm thinking of moving to Arlington, but I just want to know. It takes away that, that fear for them. So if they are, if they are clicking on school registration, and they are going into the packet to start answering the questions, they type in their address, and immediately their zone is popping up. So you can see here is the Hardy-Thompson. So they already know. To some parents, it matters enough that they continue their search. To some parents, it doesn't matter at all. And you'll see that when we start to talk about the individual schools and the data. The second way, I'm not interested in registering, I, I got a call today from Germany, Munich, Germany. And she might be, she might be coming. And so I said, just go to school locator, write on the phone with me. She's going to school locator, she put in like 25 different addresses. I'm like, okay ma'am, how much is this call costing? But going to school locator, same thing. She typed in an address, she can see if she's going to land in a buffer zone. So that's something that has really set parents to the tone. When they come in, they know they're in a buffer zone. The first year when they came to meet with me, I don't even know what you're talking about. So I think that that's, that's an improvement in our plan, and we're pleased with how that's working. Now I'm going to jump into what you guys want, the data. We've broken this presentation down from March 2014 to September, the beginning of the academic year. And then we'll carry it throughout the year. And the reason we did that is because we do those, those six days of registration in March, those intense days where we bring in tons of people. But you'll notice when I move on, someone just registered on, I believe it was April 9th. So it is, I mean, this is, today is the 30th. So, you know, we're still registering continuously. And I know I don't have to read every single one of these slides to you, because you're capable of reading them yourselves. But I did want to point out that from March of last year to the beginning of the academic year, of the children who registered, 157 of those children were in a buffer zone. So, Dr. Bodie had said the numbers, there were 500 children, how many?
So the kindergarten, about 54?
Yeah, and so, you know, we have 157 in a buffer zone, so that, you can see that we have lots of children in our school system. And I've broken it down so that you could see, between March and September, in the kindergarten, how many children, just from March to September, 117. These are just buffer zone numbers, just so, these are not class numbers, these are buffer zone numbers. 117 in kindergarten, 14 in grade one, nine in grade two, six in grade three, four in grade four, and five in grade, seven in grade five. So you can see what percentage of our populations are buffer zones. And it obviously varies. But you're absolutely right, when we had that large number in the Thompson fifth grade, they were not buffer zones, those were Thompson children, we have to put them in Thompson. I'm doing good with the time so far, right? Okay. So then we want to expand it from March all the way to April 6th, so that you can get a full, full, full view, excuse me. Remember that we had a total of 157 two slides ago, now we're looking at 180. So that's a significant increase in the number of buffer zone children in our system across the year. You'll notice it says 180 with an asterisk and 174. When we talk about registering children, we register children for a whole bunch of different reasons. Some children need to have some kind of testing or services, and they actually attend private schools that might be coming in here, but we need to register them. So just for the fun of it, I wanted you to see that we do registrations beyond just kids going directly into classrooms. And the other thing that's important to note is that until a child physically sits in a chair, their registration is pending. So sometimes we have these numbers, but they don't actually show up. So our numbers do flux all the time, it's very fluid with, with registration. So, looking at the same kind of thing we did before, we're looking at the numbers. Now we have 123 children in kindergarten in a buffer zone. That represents 68%. That's, that's a fair number that we're going to be looking at. 17 for grade one, 15 for grade two, seven for three, and four, and 11 for five. So you can see there is, that's a lot of children coming in after our school year has started. And that's, that's something important to know. Where are these kids coming? We were talking about the census. Where are these kids coming from? I get these like emails back from the principals, like, stop sending students. I never get the like, hey, how you doing? So, then I want, then we just took a quick look at the siblings. Because if you have a sibling in the school, you automatically attend that school. So it doesn't matter that you're in a buffer zone. If there's a sibling there, we always pair siblings. I think once we didn't, and it was upon the request of the family. So you can see that immediately, if you look at, say, the bracket school, immediately, we had to place 12 children into the bracket because they had a sibling there already. So it didn't matter, you know, what those numbers were before, they have to go to bracket because their sibling's already there. Now, of course, like Thompson only had two, but, but the 12 in bracket is significant. Then we wanted to see just by grade level. You know I love numbers. So, we just wanted to see, what does it look like when we start talking about buffer zones? I know someone mentioned it earlier, it's not just kindergarten, it's across our schools. So, we did it by school, and we did it by grade. And again, this is only buffer zone information. We're not talking about children who come to register, just to register, these are buffer zones. So like, if you look at the Stratton School, seven of the children in the first grade, between March and April of this year, were buffer zone children that we had to make a decision about. And I can tell you, parents, we agonize sometimes about what to do, where to place children, looking at numbers and relooking at numbers and looking at waitlist requests. So it is not just a, a quick process. And, you know, it's something like, starts in my office, goes back upstairs, comes back down to my office. So it, we are taking lots of time on that. And then, information of interest, I think this answers a few of the questions that the, that the school committee posed. What number and percent of buffer zone students, again, that was 180, which represented 33%. And then, what number of buffer zone students placed were siblings, that represented 21%? And I have some other statistics with me, because I just couldn't leave it alone. Sorry, I have to flip through the pages and put the glasses back on. What number of buffer zone students, registration requests to be on a late waitlist? 84% of people requested to be on a waitlist. That's a significant number. But I should note that it's a process. So I don't know if you remember what the registration form looks like. I don't even know if some of you have actually had a chance to see our registration form. But there's all kinds of different questions. So the first question says, what school would you like to be in? I want to be in bracket. Okay. Then the next question says, do you wish to be on a waitlist? And the answer's either yes or no. So what happens if it's blank? Well, if it's blank, then, then we don't have to honor our request because they didn't ask to be on a waitlist. And sometimes people are actually saying no. So if we look at all those numbers, and we say, what percent did we satisfy their request? The number was out of, out of 100, and, and out of 123 people who said, I know what school I want to be on, and I want to be on a waitlist, and I remembered to check yes, 123 of those people, we satisfied 75 of them, which is 61%. So more than half of the people out there, we satisfied instantly, quickly, swiftly. Then when we, when we start looking at those numbers, we say, oh, 61%. What happened to the other 40%? What did you do with those? Well, when we break those numbers down, we say, how many people did not request, did not request to be on a waitlist? And 11% of the people said, I don't care what school I go to, doesn't matter to me. So we have to add that into the, to the numbers. And then beyond that, what people, what, what percent said, not, not, it doesn't matter, actually said, no, don't put me on a waitlist. If I don't get what I want right now, put me wherever you want. And that was 19%. So you see, we have actually some fair, fair percentages of numbers saying, it's okay where I go. It's a kind of an interesting thing, someone was complimenting the school a few minutes ago, the parents saying, you know, come to school committee and come to town meeting. I will say that it's the parents in the town of Arlington that do the greatest advertising for the schools, because I actually know all about the schools. I know all about them because I researched them, and Dr. Bodie wants me to know about them. But when these parents come in and they have their buffer zone requests, they're saying, here's why I want to go, do you know what? My friend, blah, 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 blah. They can tell you story after story about what's so great about these schools. So we appreciate your love for our schools, surely. But you can see some of these statistics do say, I love all the schools in Arlington, place me where I should be. So I think, I hope, if you have your like little checklist over there, that I've covered most of the questions that you, that you have asked. And then you asked about Mill Street and Sim Circle. And the number of students from Mill Street is only seven, for buffer zone. And they're all buffer zone, really, in those places. But from Sim Circle, it's 19. So, and again, these numbers, now for this year, they're changing every day. I have to tell you, I have not had one day, not one workday, that I have not done a registration in a month. So, you know, they'll, they'll keep coming in. And, and our census list, I don't know what goes on with our census list, because the letters that we send out versus the people that walk in are completely different names. But we're working on it, we keep working on it. And now what I've done is, some people don't even know what the schools are and what the buffer choices are. So I've just very quickly, I'm going to go through these very, very quickly. And if I go through them too quickly, which is unheard of for me, but if I, if I go through them too quickly, just, you know, pipe me down, where's Mr., where's Mr. Thielman? If I go through it too quickly, you just let me know. In the Bishop bracket buffer zone, there were 23 children in the buffer zone. And of that, I'm not going to read everything on the screen, but of that, we requested, three, three requests were satisfied immediately. But do notice the next line, six of the people did not even request a preferred school. So we have a lot of flexibility in those numbers. So when you look at that and say, oh, well, they only satisfied three, well, six people didn't care where they went. So that's, that is an important, that is something important to look at when we're looking at.
Yeah, we've, we've seen, we know there's a batch of slides here, so if you just flip through them very quickly.
Oh, okay. I don't even have to talk about them, that's even better. So this is the Bishop Stratton, and this is the Bishop Thompson. And you'll notice on all of our slides, we are satisfying requests. So that's, that's an important thing, that we are making, we are satisfying requests. And then in almost, like this one, only one student didn't, only one parent didn't get what they requested originally. So these are, these are nice statistics. And then my, my last task was just to take a look at what's going on right now, since March of this year, just, which is a month, slightly over a month and a half, we have registered 452 students into kindergarten, only, you know, and if you look at those numbers, we've resolved all of our buffers today. So this data is the most current data you can look at today. And that's it.
For anyone watching at home, or anyone in the audience who wants to take a closer look, this is attached to our agenda document, which is accessible from the website. Mr. Hayner?
This does not necessarily go, expands on the, your issue on the buffer zone. Can you give me the full amount of students from Mill Street and Sims? The total amount, beyond the buffer zone, that we have registered in that school district? Thank you.
They're all, they're both in the buffer zone.
They're all in buffer zones.
That's it?
That's it, that's it.
Okay, she made the distinction that these were the ones just in the buffer zone, that's why I asked.
The both projects are in the, in a buffer zone.
So that number, that's all there are, there are only seven and 19?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
So under our filed policy JC, we have sample questions when we, when we report by the second meeting in October, but since we're talking about this now, I might as well pose a couple of the questions to you all here, and see if they can be answered. So, is class equity improving? And are the desired results being achieved? Those are the one, those are the two questions that I'm particularly interested in tonight.
If you see the, every month you get the chart for the elementary schools, I would say, if you could perhaps even compare it to before we had buffer zones, you'll see that the, actually, it's been a little bit more even. I understand Thompson's fourth and fifth grade this year went a little bit off that, that goal, for sure. And some of it had to do from late registrations. But in general, we've been able to do that, because that's actually what the first thing I do when Leilani sends this up to me, is I sit there with the, the number of students at each school, and certainly look at parent choice, but what is the most important thing is, is it going to be, I'm going to try to improve the equity between the class at that grade level.
Right.
So, yes, it is definitely helping. Is it perfect? No.
Right.
No.
Will there be recommendations or, or further data for us as the policy decides in October?
Yes, we apologize that this report was not done this fall. But we'll give you a report next fall on what, where we are at, you know, up to the start of school.
Thank you.
I really like having it this point, too, so maybe we should institute a, the two-step process. Ms. Starks?
Let's see, that one of my questions was if we needed to modify the policy. So I guess we don't, well, we will get them in the spring. Let's see, one of the biggest problems we've heard is that waiting to find out where you're placed puts families at a disadvantage who need after-school care. So, because they don't know who to sign up with, if you wait, you lose. And so that's become, that is starting to become an issue. And so I was wondering if we have, I don't have any solution, I just wanted to put it up there, but I wish I did.
Well, one, there's two things. One, we're going to try to speed it up a little bit more, but we've also sent an email to all the after-school programs. And of course, two of them under the public school control, so that's Thompson and Hardy, we're not considering a placement until the buffer zone children have been placed. So that, and, but all of the schools have been asked to not, not to go ahead with acceptance in the after-school program until this has been settled. Now, what happens, however, is keep in mind, we have 452 students. Same time last year, we're still going to see another, maybe 40 students, 50 students. They will not have that advantage. But the students that register in March, and we do the buffer zones, which we've done all of those placements, we are asking the programs not to make any decisions until that's settled.
And that's just obviously for kindergarten students, though?
That's for kindergarten.
I mean, they're going to roll up all their students, right? Just like we do, so.
We do those almost within the day or two. We're very quick on the, the other grade levels.
We've even, at some times, if it's, if it's not so busy, we'll clean call upstairs, they'll give an answer immediately, while, while the parent's still sitting in the office.
Cool.
Dr. Seuss?
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just wondering a little bit more about the process of taking, when people get off the waiting list and satisfy and how the decision is made.
We're probably, we're going to do it in stages. We'll probably do one toward the end of May and relook at where we are with that. And we'll go back to the parents who registered. And we go by the date that they registered. Everybody that registered on the first night is all in the same pool. And we just simply go through that, those lists.
Just by date?
Just by date. Just by date.
Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Well, actually, I have a few things. And I did, since we still have a couple of parents here from Stratton, I do want to just mention, though we're going to talk a little bit more about this after my report. But I did want to mention a clarifying piece of information that was said here at the committee the last meeting and also was said last night at town meeting, that the cost of putting in modular classrooms at a school is $40,000. The actual cost for two classrooms is $250,000. And we may get a little bit of a reduction by doing a large purchase, actually rental. There's many costs in it that may not, people may not be aware of. Not only is there installation costs, but there are rental costs. And these all total up. But the industry number, and they come in, they come in two classrooms. The industry number is 250,000. So that's important to know. And actually, the ones that are permanent, a little bit more than that.
Just clarification. Are we looking at two different types of modulators? Ones that are going to be permanent at Odison after the fact and the other ones that will disappear when Stratton is built?
Yes.
Are they the exact same price or are they different?
Diane?
There's a little bit of, there's a little bit of difference here. The, depending on how we spec out the modulators themselves, they will either be deeply rehabbed or brand new. If we're putting in permanent ones, the sales rep we spoke with said it's most likely that they will be new. The ones that we'd be leasing as temporary ones would either be new or rehabbed to meet our specifications.
But the ones that are going to be permanent, they're designed for that where the other ones are not designed for permanency?
No, even the ones we'd be leasing will meet our specifications in terms of what we're looking for.
I understand that. But the ones that we are going to, that are going to disappear once Stratton is up and running, they're a different type, aren't they? As opposed to the ones that we're looking to have for at least 10 to 15 years at?
I'm told not significantly. The principal difference would be that with putting in new ones, which we would buy most likely rather than lease, but we'll look at the numbers both ways, will be, you know, almost surely, brand-new construction. The ones that we'd be leasing could either be new or rehabbed.
So I guess when?
So they could be identical. The difference would be that at the end of the project, the temporary ones would be put on trucks and carried away.
I'm not trying to sound like an attorney, but the $250,000 figure may have some flexibility in it when, between the two, the new and the old.
No, the permanent ones will be more, well, it depends on whether we lease or buy and how long the lease is.
I understand.
But it's 250 either way, at least, probably more for the permanent ones.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Mr. Pierce?
Yeah, I was, on the space issue and the modular issue, there is space next to the high school that's for sale, right? Isn't there?
Do you mean the building over here in Schuler Court?
Yeah. Could it be?
A print shop over here?
Yeah, the print shop.
It's for sale.
Could it be that that could be utilized in some fashion by the school department? Just putting it out there as a purchase for administration and then have the sixth floor and have more of the space at the high school turned over for, say, eighth grade?
We've been thinking about it. I'm not going to say anymore.
Okay. Sorry.
Let me just state that we're at the beginning of the process, and there are a lot of variables that we're going to play with and talk about, and that there's an agenda item to move this over to the facilities subcommittee later so we can really do some exploration. Mr. Hayner.
Dr. Bodie, are you going to be talking tonight at all about the space study that we're getting involved in? Analysis of our space needs?
I wasn't planning it, but I could re-mention it.
Okay.
Well, in my presentation last night, which was actually what I was going to talk about.
Okay, my only request is that, or question to you is, we're going to look at all school existing property in that analysis. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I mean, ones that we may not be currently running programs in as well. The Junior High East is what I'm talking about.
Well, no, no, that's not going to be, what we're going to find out at the end of this, first of all, is a verification of enrollment numbers with a much more comprehensive analysis. What we do is we basically, which is what a lot of districts do, this is the best practice in projections. We look at the cohort numbers and what the retention is. You've heard this before. This, the person who's doing this analysis is looking at home sales and just a lot of metrics that we don't look at normally.
I guess what I'm looking at is that we, I think we've all accepted, we have a growth problem. Growth, a space problem related to population growth in the town. And we have to become very creative. All of our elementary schools are bulging right now. I suggested, I guess what I'd like us to do is look at all spaces that we have control of right now, possibly the one that Mr. Pierce just mentioned. It doesn't mean we're going to buy them, doesn't mean we're going to refab them or anything.
I know, you're talking about a particular, you're talking about, what we will be doing is finding out approximately how many classrooms we're going to need in this, for the school district and where. And where? Because this is, where is the growth happening under the best? So once we know that, then there's going to be decisions that we're going to have to make as a town.
Right. If Thompson has, just throwing numbers, they may be wrong, but 26 classrooms and the analysis comes out that we need 32 classrooms, or we need 33 classrooms. The reality is, we're not going to be able to put a block on the top of the building. We're going to have to be more creative somewhere else. So I just want us to be, look at as much as we can in this thing so we don't have to go back and have to look at it again. I want to take advantage of this study as, I'd like us to look at this as broad as we can. We may need that broad look later on, but have it available to us as options. Thank you.
The other thing is, is that with the MSBA, they're only allowing us to do one project at a time, and we're sitting in a huge hawking project. So that sort of limits what we can do on other sites until we resolve our high school issue.
But we also, right now, we're dealing with Stratton right now outside of MSBA. And I think if the town realizes to spend some money today to save some money tomorrow, they'll be willing to listen to us. They have been very good about that.
Yeah, we should have everything on the table, without a doubt.
Thank you.
We will. And I think once we get that, there's certainly going to be a lot of discussion here at this table with the town manager, with the board of selectmen. This is what we're going to have.
This is why I want us to look at the Junior High East and all the properties that we have. It may not be viable. The dollar figure may could turn around and say, it's prohibitive and we, but we'll then know definitely. We won't be guessing. You won't have me hounding you for it.
Okay, continue.
Well, Mr. Slickman did say that one of the, we've planned, I had planned this evening to show you the slides and the main points I wanted to make as part of our presentation. But then I learned that capital was going to be taken out of order because Mr. Fossett wasn't going to be there Monday night. Most likely budgets will be taken up Monday evening, later in the evening. But because we had three major items in the capital budget, Stratton, the technology allocation, and TIRF, wanted to be able to, you know, address and ask for the support of town meeting before that budget was taken up. So last night, I, we'd been working on this. It turns out, I had to really sort of speed it up and not say absolutely everything that I wanted to say. But I did want to just show the slides because there's some really, I think, some very important ones in here that sort of speak to a lot of what we talked about even this evening. Well, first, you've seen this before. We don't have to spend a lot of time on it. But I think what, for a lot of people who don't understand about school budgets, and there's always people for the first time, that they think that town appropriation is our budget. And it's not. It's certainly the vast majority, which is sort of the gold here, the large part of, the largest part of the circle. But the other sectors of the circle refer to our fees and grants. But what I wanted to, because one of the questions that I think as a town, we always want to reflect on is, are we really getting the value for the dollars we spend on education? Certainly, there's some people that think that probably we're spending too much money on education. But in that kind of discussion and analysis, it's always good to take a look at other communities. And a couple of years ago, and in fact, it was put into the FY '16 annual budget and financial plan, there is now a group of communities called the Town Manager 12. We call them the T-12 communities, that were chosen by town, school, and union leadership as being the most comparable to Arlington. And there are a lot of metrics that were looked at. In fact, a couple, I think Dr. Allison Ampe was on that committee as well. That doesn't mean that all of these communities are cookie cutters of each other. They're obviously very individual and very different, but they're comparable on these metrics. And these communities are Belmont, Brookline, Medford, Melrose, Milton, Natick, Needham, North Andover, Redding, Stonem, Watertown, and Winchester. Now, what you see here in this graph is the per pupil expenditures for each of these T-12 communities. And the red bar is Arlington. So we are right in the middle in terms of what we spend for education. But then the next slide, is the slide that shows how we do in academic achievement of our students. And this is measured by standardized tests. So while we were in the middle for per pupil, we are on the high end for achievement, which I think really speaks to lots of things. First of all, we've got great schools. We have, and I was talking before about how wonderful the teachers are at a particular school, but I would say that that is in general true in Arlington. And I think our reputation is out there, and people want to be here. And I sort of take the enrollment increase as a challenge, of course. But I also see it's quite an affirmation of the work that we're doing. And I think it's bringing in a tremendous diversity into our schools, which I think is just wonderful. But it doesn't have, it has its challenges, too. I'm not saying that it doesn't. But I think this speaks loudly to what's going on. And we're doing a great job. We obviously always want to do better. Maybe that's part of what the energy of our district is all about. So going on, this is the graph that we've been talking about tonight that demonstrates what we're projecting in the way of enrollment growth here. Diane, did you want to talk a little bit about the different colors in there?
Sure. The teal down at the bottom is elementary, the red in the middle is the middle school, and the yellow at top is high school. And you can see that initially, going back to '07, that the growth is really taking off at the elementary level. But that is, over time, it's phasing up because obviously those larger elementary classes are rolling through to the top. As Dr. Bodie was saying, that we have a kindergarten class above 500, our senior class is about 300. So that gives you a sense of the change over time and just in a relatively short span of years. So as these classes, and we have classes above the kindergarten that are in the mid to high fours, as they roll up, you know, if we have three classes of 500 at the middle school, that's a very different middle school than what we have now.
Yeah, and this space study, of course, is going to deal with heavily into the elementary because we already know, when we're looking here, we're looking at maybe 1,600 at the high school at the time the high school actually would be renovated and rebuilt. So we're anticipating what's going to happen here. Now, the issue is Odison. We can only be engaged in an MSBA project one at a time. And so we've got this situation where we're really focused on the high school. We're able to finish our elementary school with town money. And I take my hat off to the capital planning committee for being able to figure out all the funding for this. But we do have our middle school sitting there with enrollment growth that's starting to hit it now. This year, the next two years are going to be a little tight. But what's going to happen is, when the larger kindergarten, larger classes at the elementary school are there in '18, '19, we're really, I think, beyond our ways of being creatively handling space at the middle school. And yet, we could be in the middle of a study here at the high school committing monies, bonding, trying to bond money for the high school, and there isn't capacity in the town to deal with added classrooms at the middle school. So this idea of putting modulators there that are going to be permanent really addresses two needs. And I know that, I fully get that there's issues that parents are unhappy at Stratton about fourth grade at, potential fourth grade. And I will say a couple of comments about that in a minute. But being able to put some portables at Odison that will remain is going to be able to solve that problem for those years when we are not going to be able to address a permanent solution there. And we don't even know if we need a permanent solution. That's actually one of the reasons we want to verify our enrollment growth. Are we seeing a bubble that's going to, that's just going to eventually flatten out? I don't know. And we need to find that out. So we certainly don't want to build 12 more classrooms onto Odison and then find that they're, we don't need them in 10 years either. So that's another issue.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Ray.
Last night, in the capital planning, in the part of the Stratton financing plan, in FY '17, they're going to allocate the major amount of money for construction and relocation of students at Stratton. But also in '17, they put down capital appropriation for additional classroom space at Odison. The money they put was 500,000. Using the figure you gave before, that may translate into four classrooms. Is that correct?
Eight. Go ahead, Diane.
If I may, I'm a member of the capital budget committee, so I'm a little closer to these details. The hope is, is that we can kill two birds with one stone.
I understand the rationale behind it. But I mean, I was, the $250,000 figure was used before for two classrooms. Am I correct?
That $500,000 figure that was in for the Odison wasn't necessarily thinking, you know, it wasn't that modulators were the only possible solution with that funds. Another solution might have been to create very state-of-the-art workrooms for teachers so that teachers would no longer have their own classrooms but be situated in a workroom and the classrooms, I mean, there's all kinds of things you could do with space. And setting, earmarking some money to deal with space is just a good idea, given our enrollment situation.
I saw the $500,000 figure. I saw the two, I heard you say 250. I made that assumption. So it's still in the planning stages and you?
Correct.
So the intent is to have the $500,000 appropriated. And hopefully by then, there'll be an idea of where we're going and thinking about it.
If the modulators, if the modulators are the ultimate plan, and it's still in the planning phases, what it would allow us to do is utilize those funds set aside for Odison growth, utilize funds from the project for the Stratton, and be able to get more at the Odison than we could afford alone, have a better situation for the Stratton, and ideally still have enough money in the Stratton to do the kind of last-end stuff on the project that we want, like computers and those kinds of things. Because, you know, our total project costs, the more we spend on relocation, the less we have to spend on the project. It's an all-in package that was voted. So if we think about the 12, 12-1 that was voted last night for the Stratton, and then the extra half million for Odison space, if we can combine them, we can do a better thing in both locations.
Just for clarification, the number that was voted was 12 million for, it was under Stratton, but it had that line for Odison in it. So we're not looking at a separate 500,000 from the Stratton.
So is it 12-4 with?
12-075-940.
So it was 12-1?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, they're held separately.
It's 25, okay. But all I'm saying is that $500,000 is not on top of that. It's part of that 12-1. I'm looking right at the chart from their report.
You have the advantage of me, sir.
Okay, next item.
Okay, um, next item.
Let me just finish one more graph.
Okay, go ahead.
Because this is actually really, this is really interesting. I don't know if it shows up as well as it could. But at any rate, this was a, a very surprising news, news item that came out on April 20th. And what it is, is, was a national study of looking at where they call the creative class is choosing to live and to be. Not necessarily where they work, but, but where they, in those work, in those areas, where are they choosing to live? And this was done by Dr. Richard Florida, who is the co-founder and editor of City Lab, which is the media arm of the Atlantic Magazine. And he's an editor at the Atlantic and a professor at NYU. So at any rate, at the creative class is defined as composed of high paid knowledge workers. And we've been talking a lot about 21st century creative thinking, the kind of preparation we want for the, the jobs that are in the future. And so these are people in fields of science and technology, arts, culture, media, business management, media. I mean, I said that, healthcare and education. So these are people who, their work is all about their knowledge and, and thinking. All right? So the lead, the list is the, is the areas of the country that are dominated with this group of people. And the, the big groups are in Northern California, DC area and Boston. There's a couple of outliers, like there's Hoboken, New Jersey, and I think there's something up in Washington, which is of course just.
Dublin, Ohio.
But the thing that was really interesting, which I think sort of caught us all by surprise, is that the four communities in Massachusetts are Arlington, Brookline, Cambridge and Newton. This is where people are choosing to live. So what we're, what we're.
I think the thing to note is that Hoboken outranks us.
That's where my daughter is, so.
So what is going on in Hoboken?
Hoboken's a cool place.
It is a cool place.
I know, there's three places in Maryland.
Well, it's DC.
It's all DC.
DC area.
Dublin, Ohio?
Yeah.
Can you make it bigger, Diane?
I can't.
No.
I'm sorry, Julie and I played with this quite extensively. We tried different colors.
Is this, is this on anywhere? I know it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
I can put it up.
Okay.
Go down at the bottom. It should pop up.
It wasn't put in?
It wasn't. It's not on there, no.
I can put all these slides in the, yeah.
That would be great.
So the, it, this reflects what we've been talking about here. 21st century learning is about inquiry and critical thinking and how you, how you, or, you know, you, you do executive functioning about the kind of learning that you do. So enough said on that. So at any rate, our emphasis on building for the habits, the strong habits of mind of 21st century is totally in line with the, the people who are choosing to come and live here in Arlington. And I think that was one of the, so that was one of the important points I wanted to get across. But I also want to mention that, I don't think I did, while this book is in hard copy for town meeting members, anybody who would like to see it. And it's just loaded with wonderful information from principals and curriculum leaders about the very innovative and creative things that have been going on and awards. You have to go to the high school section and look at all of the awards that have been, that they've had in the last year too. So it's online. It's on our district website. I do have a couple of other things. All right, all right. But you're probably going to want to do about day in the hill after anyway. Did you happen, our visit from our sister city from Japan is going extremely well. Naga Okakio.
Naga Okakio.
If you say it faster, thank you.
Yeah, right.
But they, we've had visitors at Odison, Dallin, and tomorrow they'll be here at the high school. And from what I understand, well, I've seen them perform and they've just been terrific.
They're a big class this year, right?
Yeah, we had a big group. 26, yeah. And we have more high school students than we've had in the past. We had, we have 10. Laura, Dr. Cheston is going to talk a little bit about some PD that we've just recently had, that just two things we want to mention.
Sure. We had about, we had 17 teachers and math coaches attend the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics National Conference about a week ago. Five coaches attended a pre-conference meeting that was targeted to fine tune their already excellent math coaching skills. And it was an opportunity for them to meet with their peers who do the same job alike across the country. So it's a really a great opportunity for them. They do have each other, but they're, you know, we only have the, the sort of the ways we do things in Arlington. So it gave them an opportunity to.
Yeah, I was, I was there.
Talk.
It's awesome to be surrounded by, you know, your own teacher. But it was funny, I was in a talk and the person who was speaking said, I don't know if any of you know where this is, but I actually got my start here, near here, in a, a school called Odison Middle School. And this woman stood up in the back and she goes, I teach there now. And I was like, oh my God, this is so funny. But yeah, he was a Spanish teacher at Odison. Became a math teacher and now he was back giving a talk at NCTM. So it was pretty funny.
He saw the light, right?
Yeah.
And so it was a great opportunity for, for the math teachers also at the middle school and the high school to speak to other math teachers across the country. And today we had the kickoff of a grant that we talked about a little bit, a couple of weeks ago when Ms. Hanson was here about the teacher leadership program. So three principals, two curriculum directors and Ms. Hanson and four teachers and myself attended a full day workshop on activating teacher leadership. And we will be having in the third, second or third week in May, another two hour meeting to begin what that planning will look like for next year. The interesting part of the conference, the workshop, was that there were teams from Arlington. There was a team from Dedham and there was actually a team from Kentucky. So certainly this workshop is well known enough and the presenters enough to have people come all the way from Kentucky. So it was a great opportunity.
And the last thing, Dr. Allison Ampey, I'm sorry she's not here tonight because I wanted to give an update on the high school security. This was a question asked. I wanted you to know that 29 of the cameras that are at our exterior doors are, have, are going to be upgraded. And that process has already started. More LED lights have been installed around the school and that's coming from a grant. And we're able to also update all of our two-way radios, which we had put in for a grant, but we've been able to figure out how to fund that and which will be augmented by the repeater that was put up here on the sixth floor, which, which help amplifies the signal. So there has been some progress in this area. And that, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Bodie. Next order of business is agenda item, refer Stratton correspondents to subcommittee. Just as a note to casual observers of the school committee, is these meetings are fairly formal and there's always a lot of process before a decision gets to this point. And most of this conversation and deliberation takes place in subcommittee where we have a much more informal environment that we can include more people and have much more of an extensive discussion. And it seems that this is an appropriate thing to do with the topic of the Stratton relocation. So I'd like to entertain, to hear a motion to refer the correspondents from the Stratton parents to the facilities subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Starks, seconded by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion? Dr. Seuss, I'm thinking the committee chair.
Giving it to, yes, exactly.
Where we are. Motion by Dr. Seuss, seconded by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Starks.
So I guess one of the things that I would, as the chair of the facilities subcommittee, which I'm more than happy to take this on. But one of the things that I would like to know from the committee is, I guess, do you have any input or any insight as to what kinds of things you want to see happen and/or what kinds of things the superintendent already have planned? So those are the two things I, questions I have as far as, you know, I mean, in my mind, I think that, you know, I, I, I wasn't as involved. And so I would love to talk to you about the Thompson rebuild and kind of how that went. But I mean, my thought is that probably we're at the point, I know we finally got, you know, approval for the funding to start the planning phase, is to, you know, the first order of business should maybe just start thinking about when we want to have some regular meetings with parents and regular kind of information updates and what kind of media we want to put that on and where we want to have it and all of that kind of stuff. But I mean, I don't know, I know, Dr. Bodie, you've been driving this, so.
I, I know one thing is that we, there are a lot, there's a lot we don't know about portable classrooms. That's something we haven't dealt with in the past. And what are the citing requirements? What are the costs? What are the long range needs? All the things that are surrounding where we need to go with this, I think, would be an appropriate conversation to have and to take this opportunity to involve the community. So let me go to Mr. Hayner.
My understanding is the, the forming of a, the committees with the parent input and stuff. I too want to see the charge for this thing, but it usually goes to the superintendent who sets up the parent connection committee and things of that nature. I'm not trying to take anything away.
No, no.
But I think the facilities committee, from my perspective, I'd like to put this up there for discussion, is that to take these letters right now that we've all received, give, give the parents in, in the community, the Stratton community an opportunity to have an open conversation with school committee members and have the facilities committee bring it back. Part of that may be creating questions that you just, with regard to the portables, the timing, the schedule. Again, going back to that unified message coming out of the facilities committee. And I see, I see the subcommittee as always being the conduit back and forth to us and share. But I think a list of things, and one of the things I'd like to suggest is hearing from the parents and getting their concerns. One of them right now is location for some of them. But I think that the other parents, as a parent, I'd want to know about what a portable is. I know what a classroom is. I've been in the classrooms. We right now don't have any portables. And is there, have these questions go from the facilities committee, if the superintendent isn't there or just whoever, through Diane or whoever, to get these information, to have this positive interaction with the people.
Right. We are, the town is moving forward in setting an RFP out for a designer. That process will take probably another six weeks where hopefully a designer will be selected by the end of May. So really, a lot of this is just sort of on hold. I know there's an anxiousness to get talking about it. But as I said with this, when, when Ms. Johnson went to all these different schools with the vendor, with an architect, with our director of facilities, these were the strong recommendations as to sites. And I thought it was, it was fair to say what the, the strong recommendations were. It was, it's been discussed. But all of this has to be revisited when you actually get the designer onboard and going, and doing another, you know, a verification, another analysis. We may come back to exactly the same thing. Because one of the things we found out is not all of our elementary schools are designed very well for the addition of, of modulars, which is actually an issue looking to the future. But so we need to have another look at that. So the plan would be the, the concentrated time will probably be in June because we need to have the modulars ordered by August 1st at the latest. And you need, you need a period of time where you bid. And so that will probably be, the bidding time will be July. So it's going to be a very intense period, period of time, really between now and then you can, we can gather information. Now, you should know that Mr. Hayner, Mr., not Mr. Hayner, but Mr. Hannah, the principal of the Stratton has, is putting together, has put together a parent committee. And I don't know who's on the committee. He's sending, I, I'm not sure exactly where that stands right now. To have that committee be a funnel of information about concerns. At the meeting I had at Stratton, we had the assistant principal of the middle school there taking, I have four pages, five pages of notes of things to consider. And so, and I've seen all these emails as well. So we know what the, the issues are. At this point, there's not much we can do until we get the designer and start looking, doing another analysis of where, what's the best situation.
Just for clarification, you're talking about June, July and August, not of 2015, but of 2016?
No.
Or it's this one?
Okay.
This one. This one now.
So they need to be ordered a year in advance.
A year in advance.
That's what I need, okay.
So the motion is to refer the correspondents to the subcommittee for discussion. The correspondence focuses on the citing of the fourth grade at the Stratton, at the Odison. So what's the most effective way to have that, to, to address this? And the most, and what's the timeframe for it? What do you, could you summarize what, you know?
The most effective way to communicate is through the parent committee at Stratton. That's not to say don't come to facilities. That's, I think, perfectly fine. I've certainly gotten emails. I'm going to go back in June and meet with the parents again, once I have more information. Right now, I have no more information. This is where the recommendation is and we have to, we, we look at it. And I will also have probably the first, the first, the enrollment growth report, probably have that by late May. We hope, I know. So, but I also want to look at that because that's another big piece of information in terms of how to think about this.
So the sub, does the school committee, are we, so would the subcommittee be making a recommendation to the school committee for any vote on anything? Or who's going to, are we, are we, I mean, what's, I mean.
Honestly, it's.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, we certainly bring everything back to you, but it's going to come from the experts and what they think are the, are possibilities. Now, maybe there's going to be more possibilities and we have to make some choices. I don't know yet.
Because, I mean, do you envision the full school committee voting on a plan for the citing of the, of the modulars?
I think that that would be a good idea to have a vote of the committee, of the, the school committee. Now, the only problem is. Timing, yeah, it'd have to be probably a Jul., probably a late June meeting or something.
So the, so the subcommittee would meet to review the correspondence and inform the committee's vote on the citing of the modulars. Right? Is that, am I, is that?
You don't have to vote on the citing of the modulars. That's not.
It's not required.
Yeah, okay.
It's not required.
Yeah.
It's not required.
I, I just.
I think it'd be a good idea.
You know, the thing is.
Okay, so.
Thing is, if, if we are to make a decision on this, which I think is certainly within our domain, we need to be well informed. And right now, I don't think there's anybody in, in this group who is an expert enough on this topic to go and have any kind of an informed conversation about where we should put modulars, the cost of the modulars, the advantages and disadvantages of placement of kids in these modulars, any of this stuff. We, we don't have enough information to carry on a, a, a logical conversation. At the end of this process, at the very least, we should be able to carry on an intelligent conversation about what we're doing and why we're doing it and, and have the input of the community as the process moves forward. And to have an open process so that people with different ideas and thoughts on this can get them before us so we, so, so every option can be considered and weighed as we're moving forward. And understand that while there may be a committee at Stratton that's been put together by the principal, any of our meetings are open meetings and everybody is welcome to attend. And in the case of the subcommittees, everybody is welcome to come and participate. So there, there is nothing exclusive about having a conduit through a committee at any of the schools. It's just one method and that any parent group who wants to be involved or communicate through, through a separate channel is more than welcome to engage with the chair of the committee and, and, and work through the process. Mr. Hayner.
I'm confused. We don't need the portables until a year from now, a year from September. The only money that has been appropriated is for design, not the purchase of the modules.
That's right. The money's available after July 1.
Not for the modules. The modules will not be appropriated until, from capital planning until next town meeting.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to have the designer develop, we're going to figure out how many modulars we need and where we need them. They're going to produce a professional specification to go out to bid because we have to bid for these modulars. We can't just go pluck them off the shelf.
I understand.
Okay, so all of those pieces, there's enough money available to get the ball rolling. We wouldn't start making lease payments on the rental modulars or payments on the modulars until they show up.
Fine.
So that's where the timing of the two years, the, the million dollars set aside for design and for the initial pieces is sufficient. By the time the modulars, they can be pre-ordered, they can be contracted, by the time they show up and we start paying, we'll be into the next fiscal year.
I think the need for. I think the need for, of the facilities committee, if that's where it's going to go, because we've heard a lot of the, the concerns from the parents and stuff, besides the location, I think it's important for them to understand what a modular is and things of that nature. These are things that can be done in, in the next couple of months. To, to, we want everybody to be on our side, and I think it's important, if, if the people come to the facilities committee, and I, and Cindy, I apologize, but whatever need you can do as soon as the, you know, the, the time factor, but to get this back to you folks, to get answers so that they feel an active part, involved in this, uh, this thing, and to maintain a partnership. The location part, uh, I, I, I would hope that we're not set in stone, uh, for all the locations, there may be other ways to look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce.
Well, I think what we did with the buffer zone conversation, which was a very agonizing one, and, and, and it brought a lot of, uh, voices from the community out, pro and con, was that we looked at, um, other communities who had done similar things, and we looked at Brookline, for example, and I'd love the facility subcommittee to look at other towns who have gone through enrollment bursts and bubbles and, and see how they handled it, and, did they have modulators, where did they put them, and see if there's any comparables that you can derive from, from that look.
Dr. Seuss.
Um, yeah, I just want to say, I mean, given our space constraints, there's no way to come up with the perfect solution. Um, you know, Thompson had the same situation, they had third grades split into three different schools, you know, it wasn't ideal. Um, what I think at the end of the process we want to see is that everyone understands why the decisions are made, so that even if the decisions are not the best ones that you would, in an ideal world, you want to have, you understand, was it made for financial reasons, was it made just be for, for logistical reasons, we just can't put a modular there, just have a really clear understanding of why the, what the decision process was, and I, that's, I think, our goal.
Mr. Thielman?
It seems like the most effective meeting would be one in which we have the designer present. So when would that be possible?
Well, the RFPs.
Or here.
Won't be, the person, the firm will not be selected till probably in May, late May, that's, everything going to schedule, and then, they're going to need some time to sort of get the lay of the land and do their analysis, so I think it would probably be July.
In which he, in which a designer could come and make a presentation about all the different options.
Our last meeting is.
Because I mean, the expert, the expert on modulators and siting is not, I mean, you have knowledge of it, but the expert is the designer.
Um, the designer would be, I think it would be probably useful to have both the designer, but it might even be more useful to start out with the sales rep from a modular company, to come and show some examples of classrooms and explain how they work, how they're set up, you know, what they look like, the fact that they're both heating and air conditioning controlled at the classroom level, that most of them come with bathrooms within that piece of the building, um, they're just, they're very interesting and widely used throughout the nation, and I think it, you know, I think people have an image, I know I did at first, um, in, in middle school, I was in a tumbled-down, rotting old modular, and it wasn't too great. They've come a long, long way. They're a very different thing now.
All right. Mr. Hayner.
I'm going to put the elephant on the table right now. Stratton has been the hotel for all of our rebuilds. This is the only school that's being asked to go to modules. The parent tonight, I hopefully expressed what most of the parents believe, they've accepted that, they understand the module thing, but they want the elementary experience, and I understand and I applaud the, the two-for aspect of, of maximizing the needs that we have in our growth and things like that, but I want us, and Dr. Seuss mentioned it before, there's, there's a reality factor, everybody isn't going to get everything they need, but I want us to keep an open mind to, to all aspects in this. Thank you.
I don't think we'd be engaging in this process if we didn't have an open mind and we're looking for any good idea that would land on the table. Uh, are we ready for a vote? Mr. Thielman.
Yeah, so the only thing is the, the, I don't want to raise expectations about a timeline if we're talking about, I mean, when do you think that, when, there's, so there's no, and the motion is review the, review the correspondence, no timeline, no date certain, nothing like that?
Correct. We're just referring it so that the esteemed chair of the committee and her excellent colleagues can work with the Stratton community and anyone else who's interested in modular classrooms to gather facts and, so we can come to an understanding, we can learn.
Cool.
Okay.
And now we're ready for a vote. Uh, a motion on the table is to refer correspondence to the, uh, facilities subcommittee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote, six to nothing, um, and that takes care of that issue. Now we go down to the consent agenda. Um, all items on the consent agenda will be subject to one vote. Um, I will ask that the, uh, Addison, the, the trip to Japan be removed from the consent agenda and taken at a later date. So the, um, the consent agenda now will have approval of warrant 15147 dated 4/9/2015 in the amount of $518,380.22. Approval of minutes, regular meeting on April 9th, 2015, and the organizational meeting of April 9th, 2015, and approval of public hearing, school choice, which will occur on Thursday, May 14th, 2015, at 6:30 PM.
So.
Moved by Mr. Thielman, seconded by.
Second.
Ms. Starks, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's a unanimous vote. Subcommittee and liaison reports, um, uh, we'll go down the list, and, uh, special study group on superintendent evaluation, Mr. Hayner.
Uh, it's not listed here, but this should be the technical second reading of the questionnaire and things of that nature. Uh, so I would move that we accept that. Are we all familiar with what I'm talking about? The questionnaire going out for the evaluation of the superintendent?
Oh, the one we saw, yeah.
And, uh, the procedure and stuff like that. I need a second.
Uh, for what?
What, Mr.? Mr. Hayner is moving approval on a second reading of the questionnaire for the superintendent's evaluation.
Did you get any input, feedback?
I got nothing.
Oh.
The one that I just sent a couple of small things on, is that the?
Yes, and, and that, we, we made those adjustments at the, the last, prior to the last meeting, as far as I know.
I didn't make any changes, right?
I did.
So you, okay. Because I'm not on that committee anymore.
So you're moving, you're moving to accept it as it is, or you're moving to?
I, I.
Sorry.
I, I accepted your input, I made the, they weren't major, they didn't change, they didn't change anything of substance, so I just put it in.
Yeah.
Like that. They, there were no substantive changes in the, the thing. I, I, as my wife hit me on the head, she says, that's gram, better grammar on one of them, like that.
Hmm. Okay, so, moved by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Um, warrant committee.
I signed the warrant, payroll warrants, everyone gets, has gotten paid.
Oh, good.
I have not, I have not established any, uh, meetings at this time. Just for clarification, um, the superintendent evaluation was a temporary committee, is, do I need to bring up something in the spring, uh, we, we have the calendar, uh, that we're going forward with it like that? Let me bring it the next meeting.
Yeah, let's bring it in the next meeting, we can, so that we're all prepared to discuss it. Uh, policies and procedures, Mr. Pierce.
We held a meeting on April 14th, we discussed policies relative to, um, student discipline and parental leave and family medical leave. We'll be, uh, meeting again on May 14th at 5:30 here to go over those same policies. There've been some changes, uh, from the lawyers and from the administration.
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampey is not here, is there anybody from the budget committee who'd like to say anything on the budget subcommittee? Hearing none?
Oh, I was just going to say, we, we, we took input from Ms. Dunn and, uh, Ms. Johnson on the book, uh, going forward and stuff like that, they took some of our suggestions and shared with her, shared with us that some of our suggestions weren't realistic and we all agreed.
Mm-hmm.
We were, it was a positive, very positive meeting.
Excellent. Uh, facilities.
Obviously, we need a meeting. So, we'll have one, I don't know when, soon.
Uh, district accountability, curriculum instruction, and assessment, Mr. Thielman.
I'll report.
Uh, committee relations, Dr. Seuss.
Uh, yes, we have a meeting coming up on Thursday, the 7th, and it's, uh, basically just to start brainstorm a little bit, we're not, you know, there's no, I did not necessarily, but what do we want to accomplish in the coming year?
What time?
Uh, it is at four, four o'clock.
Thank you.
It should be sent out soon.
We had a trip yesterday, today on the Hill, I know our student rep was there, she's smiling, she, I think she had a good time. Did you enjoy the food?
She was fabulous, by the way.
Yeah, she was excellent. Did a great job of, uh.
Articulate.
Talking to our reps and senators. Uh, let me, uh, ask Clara to just tell us what your impressions of going today on the Hill were.
Um, I definitely thought it was a very cool experience to have, to see sort of the government and education and the government, um, at work, and it was very awesome to be able to talk to our representatives and our senators. I definitely saw and heard a lot of, we don't have as much money in our budget as we need to, which of course I've heard everywhere, um, about education, um, and I heard about a lot of issues that I hadn't heard about before and are definitely interesting to me, um, so I would like to continue being a part of, um, coming to these meetings and being able to speak out about things.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Seuss.
Oh, just, um, some of the districts had a whole bunch of students, and last year we had none, this year we had one, which was fabulous, and as I said, she was incredibly articulate and, you know, no fear at all, and just saying what you need to say to our legislators and advocating for the schools, um, we would like to have more students, so I encourage, uh, more students to.
Oh, yeah.
Come forward next year, and we want, we want to welcome you guys, and the food is fabulous.
Yeah, there will definitely, there will definitely be interest, yeah.
Mr. Hayner.
I would like to mention that Clara, uh, expressed herself extremely well on, uh, the issues of student anxiety and, uh, testing. Uh, she was not shy about that, and it was wonderful to hear it from a student.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Starks organized a bunch of, uh, issues that we discussed, and I wanted to thank her for all the prep work that she did in terms of, uh, helping us to make this successful.
Cool, yeah, I know, I felt like we were really on target, you know, it was, I thought that we really got our, thanks, many thanks to Kersey, who did, uh, yeoman's work, uh, kind of pulling all of her, um, issues with the budget and, uh, you know, the foundation budget into kind of a digestible piece for everybody, so, um, you know, she did a lot of great work, and, uh, I just thought that everybody was great, everybody kind of came in, we, we were really good about targeting what we wanted to say and kind of listening to each other, as well as, uh, you know, all, making sure everybody had a voice, so that was great.
We linked up to, on the MAS C listserv, to the foundation budget articles that were written by, um, Kersey and, um, and, and Linda, um, and I got a lot of very positive feedback about the articles, that they were very well-written, very clear, uh, and, uh, other communities were anxious to go and plug their numbers into, into our work to duplicate that effort. Mr. Hayner, was your hand up?
No, I, I, Ms. Starks covered it.
Okay.
I just want to make a plug for, um, Kersey and Lynda Hanson's, um, Dr. Allison, and Lynda Hanson's, um, advocate articles.
Yes.
Um, which were also really informative, and I urge you to go look for them in the records if you haven't seen them already.
Any other members with announcements or, um, uh, things to bring forward to the committee? Mr. Hayner.
Tomorrow, I got a semi-corralled into, I'm going to be the keynote speaker to today's students and tomorrow's teachers, uh, those that are graduating, uh, a little trepidation, like my first day being the chair here, I'm nervous about it, but I'm excited about it, seeing future teachers.
Uh, yes, Dr. Seuss.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, Seuss, Addison Middle School is performing Seussical this weekend.
Oh.
On Friday and Saturday.
Um, yeah, um.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Starks?
I also want to remind people that the townwide cleanup is, uh, the Saturday before Mother's Day, and if you ask me, what better gift can we give Mother Nature? What better Mother's Day gift can you give Mother Earth? Then show up and pick up a bag of trash. Um, they are going to organize it, uh, back behind in the big town lot, and, uh, you can show up, they'll give you gloves and bags, and you can go off and do whatever area of town you want. Um, I think I'm probably going to be doing the Route 2 side of Spy Pond, so pick a place, show up, clean up, it'll be fun.
And, and just to note, the Touchdown Club is having their annual banquet on the 14th, and I know that the previous two chairs gave the gavel to their vice chair to make a quick run down the street to go and extend greetings and to congratulate, uh, an organization that does a lot for our kids here in town, so that, uh, Dr. Seuss will be leading the meeting for, uh, for a little while on, on the next meeting, so.
Okay. I'm a little nervous, but okay.
Nothing to be nervous about, they're friendly, and, and I just want to extend my apologies to the rest of the committee, um, on one issue is that, uh, being a new chair, I don't think that the superintendent or I, and it's my issue, not hers, are necessarily in sync, so the agenda came out later than I would have liked, and I take responsibility for that, and I'm going to try to come up with a way to, uh, communicate with the superintendent in a little more timely manner. The vacation's sort of gotten away too, but, uh, it's my intent to get this thing out, do, do, do a better job than I did this week.
I think, Dr. Seuss, at least you found out, the former chair told me about two and a half hours, he said, oh, by the way, I'm going to be gone, so my anxiety was short lived.
Well, we'll put something tricky on the agenda, just for that spot.
Do you want to mention the, um, the candlelight vigil?
Oh, yeah, we have a candlelight vigil, uh, for the, um, victims and survivors of the earthquake in, in Nepal, uh, which will be in front of Town Hall, 7 to 7:30 PM on Sunday, May 3rd. Bring your own candles. Uh, also, the Vito San Marco Group is having a fundraiser this weekend, and also, the cup, uh, next week, they have a couple of dates where 15% of the check will be donated from Not Your Average Joe's, so if you're inclined to eat out, that's sort of a, a good way to throw a couple extra bucks in that pot as well. Uh, any other announcements before we have a motion to go to executive session?
Did you take the, the Japan trip out of the?
Yes, yeah, so we'll do that next time. Uh, we're going to move to executive session, uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and or non-union in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, the litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Mr. Hayner, uh, seconded by Ms. Starks, we will have no plans to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call, Mr. Hayner.
Aye.
Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Starks.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Aye.